This meeting is being recorded.
Good evening, everybody. It is 5:00 PM on March 2nd and I am Greg Cooks, much here of the Planning Commission, and calling tonight's meeting to order. Let's start with a roll call. Commissioner Bradbury.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Krosick.
Here.
Commissioner Soltis.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Grayna.
Here.
And from the city, we have Carl DeCemus, welcome, and Michelle Thomas, and I don't see Laura yet. But that's okay. All right. First order of business is there's a slight change in our agenda this evening. We are not going to have or discuss the transitional housing, permanent supportive housing, emergency shelters and emergency housing, which we originally had on the agenda. The reason is that one of the state agencies has expressed some concern about the wording in it. And so after a discussion with Carl and Katrina earlier this afternoon, we're going to table that for the time being, do some more work on that, reword it and then bring it back to the Planning Commission, and it will probably require another public hearing since there's some substantive changes in the wording. That may require as well that an extension of the prior temporary ordinance needs to go into effect, but that'll be handled by the city staff as well. So, having said that, and what?
And Chair, if I could just interject a little bit on that too. It's not that the state is telling us that we need to change the wording, but it is that they have made some recommendations within a letter. And I only have a draft version of that letter at the moment. They're getting me the final version likely today or tomorrow. And then once I have that, we can, we can schedule a study session again, and then we'll include that letter as part of that study session for commissioners to consider, and then allow you all to take a look and see what changes you feel, if any, you want to make in your recommendation.
Okay, thanks for that addition. The other thing I would mention is that we have a lot to digest this evening. And so this meeting has potential to be longer than what we're used to. I can tell you that we are required that if we can continue working to 8 o'clock, it requires us to pass a motion to continue working past 8 o'clock. Hopefully, that's not going to be the case this evening. In my years on the Planning Commission, though, I can tell you, we've done that a couple times. So, anyway, let's kind of get into things, and Laura Pettit, welcome from the city. Glad to see you. Thanks for joining us. So, first item is approval of the minutes from our last meeting. Are there any concerns or corrections on the minutes? If not, I'm willing to entertain a motion.
Move to accept.
So.
Second.
Moved by Bradbury, seconded by Krosick. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Okay. So, 150 pages of input from, from our constituents, and if you're like me, I've spent many hours on top of that researching information on the internet, other jurisdictions and such about short-term rentals. But why don't we start with our thoughts on the public input, and maybe tonight, Commissioner Bennett, you could lead us off.
Okay, let me pull up my comments, and these, you're talking about the input from the 36 public comments that we got?
Right, I think we have three groups. Right.
The newest group. I read through them for sure. I feel like in general, and I didn't quantify it, that there was a little more people who were interested, who are supportive of short-term rentals. And I feel like in general, people were interested in seeing some kind of regulation in them. The biggest thing that I was seeing from the comments from the people who were seemingly opposed, completely opposed to short-term rentals in various zones or completely, was that I wasn't finding any really concrete information as to why their opposition was, other than them being a nuisance or things like that that weren't really identifiable. So I was looking for a little bit more information on the strict opposition from them. I liked a lot of the ideas that people had for various parts of the regulations and that sort of thing. So I'm kind of interested to see how we start a discussion and in a broad sense, and then actually get down into the nitty-gritty details of where and what and how much and who and all of that sort of thing, because it's so much to digest with so much information at this point.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for that. Commissioner Grayna.
I pretty much echo what Amanda said. I think that a couple things, you know, most of what I was reading about why people were against it was that, you know, housing would be used for that instead of being affordable housing for single-family homeowners. I mean, that was a reoccurring theme through people who were opposing it, I thought. I was curious, and I agree, you know, it seemed like everybody was fine with, well, not everyone. It seemed that people were open to a fair and, what do I want to say, not streamlined, but easy to navigate permitting process, which I was kind of happy to see that. I thought that the one document where they were separating out housing like on boat housing, I'm not calling it the right thing. I thought that was interesting that they were using that as a separate entity than everything else. What else did I have here? One thing that I thought was interesting was somebody bringing up regulation dependent on septic systems, and I thought that that's an interesting consideration is, you know, how many people does a septic system allow for? I just thought that was an interesting thing that somebody included in here. And then I had a question about the Gig Harbor Short-Term Rental Alliance. How long has that been in place? So, if you could talk to me about that, and I was interested that that came in after our meeting and not before. So Laura, you can probably answer all that for me.
Sure, and Carl may be able to chime in as well. We met briefly with the Gig Harbor Short-Term Rental Alliance, which I believe has been very, very recently formed, mostly in in response to this specific issue and the Planning Commission and Council's review of potential regulations. So, the Owner Alliance and people who own or operate short-term rentals have very specific ideas about what may be helpful, what may not be, and have put together several documents for your review with their suggestions. And again, just suggestions. Carl, is there anything you'd like to add there?
No, I think that sums it up. I think, you know, the quick answer is that I think they're a relatively new group. Yeah.
And this is, they are not a, my understanding is they're just a group of citizens with a common interest and gave themselves that title appropriately, I think, to foster support and find people of like mind.
So, am I to understand that this group was formed after when this issue came up? I mean, is that correct?
Moratorium, correct.
Okay.
Before the regulations have been discussed both by this commission and by council.
Okay, great. I think those were just, I have like three pages of notes, but I think that hopefully I hit on the things that, you know, that was one of my most important questions, so I'll let you move on.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Bradbury.
Well, in general, I found the comments not particularly helpful. They didn't bring up any issues we haven't discussed among ourselves. And I think that's an important thing that we are, as members of the community ourselves, kind of embracing the things that are important to people in the general community. But those general comments don't help us come up with specific language. On the other hand, the Short-Term Rental Alliance people did provide some very specific input that I think we can use to guide where we go, in addition to whatever we might be able to glean from cities and counties that might already have ordinances in place. That's the thumbnail.
Okay, thanks. Thanks. Commissioner Brown, you're unmuted, so why don't you go ahead?
Well, I think one of the important issues has to do with ownership of the property and residents. And that wasn't very well covered in most of the citizen comments that I looked at, but I think it is an important point. If a residence is purchased for the purpose of renting it out and is owned by an absentee landlord, no matter whether they live across town or across the country, that seems like a business to me, and I think it's fundamentally different than someone who wants to rent one or two bedrooms in their house or occasionally rent the entire house, but maintain that house as their primary residence that they're responsible for. So I think that's a point we need to keep in mind as we go forward. And well, I'll stop there and give someone else a chance.
Okay. Mr. Soltis, go ahead.
I hope you guys will forgive me for going on a little long here, but there's a lot of issues I wanted to kind of raise and give you my two cents on, so apologize in advance for that. But it is, as Greg said, it's a serious issue, and we need to think seriously about this. And I agree that the comment, some of the comments were relatively brief, but you could sense that there's passion in the community, both sides here. And I have this kind of rule of thumb in my head, if some people care enough to write a letter or call or sign in to speak, that means there's a lot more people out there that are concerned. It's not everybody that has the gumption to come forward and speak, but generally, there's a groundswell behind those people that do do that. This is a big concern for, I would say, a small number of people at one level. The ones that live with the problem of a short-term rental being next to them or a few of them next to them, and people that may or may not follow the rules, may not follow the city regulations and cause a problem, make a lot of noise, park, you know, badly. You guys have seen or heard about all that. So that's probably a relatively narrow pocket of people that are hit by that one, because we're over 10,000 people in town, and, you know, there's 50 or something like that short-term rentals in town. So, a few of those people, and I think what we need to do for them is we got to beef up the code enforcement in Gig Harbor. If indeed those things are occurring and they're sliding through the cracks from the city, not being over the police, then we ought to push harder on that to make sure that those properties, just like the other properties in town, all properties, if somebody is breaking the rule, then I think the city is responsible for stepping in and taking care of the problem. And I'm kind of concerned that that's happened, and we've gotten to this point. Their discussion on affordable housing is an interesting one. I intuitively think that's probably true, but there's, I haven't seen any data that tells me that that's the case. You would think, well, adding, taking a house out of a long-term rental and putting in short-term would affect the affordable housing, but again, I'd like to see some numbers and how that's happened over the last few years. Short-term housing right now is relatively small in numbers, but that could change. The bigger question here for all of us, and I'll just touch on this and I'll get off the stage for a second, is what's short-term rental is going to do to the social fabric of Gig Harbor? I mean, where does it become a point where it's not a place that people really want to live? It's just a place that people want to come and recreate, tourist-centric versus resident-centric? I'm sure we all looked at the literature and we saw that there are places in this country where this problem has gotten out of hand, way out of hand. And the towns that you read about are, resemble the places that even I remember when I was at some time years ago, they've become simple tourist towns, and that's a problem from my perspective. If there's a balance, we have to find it, but I don't think we want to dispense with the issue and just put in a few regulations. Well, we may want to do that. But we don't want to like treat it and walk away from it. This thing may come, become much more difficult for all of us, and we need to have maybe a look today and a look in a couple of years and a look in five years to see what the right answer is. But we shouldn't like show, put an answer on the table and walk away. Last comment, I don't think that's the future that we really want for the city of Gig Harbor. We don't, many of you have been here much longer than I have, but I came here for a certain reason. I didn't come here to see the downtown dominated by a lot of people that are just here for the fun of it. I wanted to see a community where people live here, work here, do all their stuff here and make it a lifetime place. So I'll stop there, Greg. I can go on, but I'll wait for a while.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Commissioner Krosick.
Yes, I don't know if you received it, but I sent out a two-and-a-half-page summation of my thoughts. The first two pages are the pieces, bits and pieces in the ordinances from the other cities that we looked at that I thought should be included in our ordinance. Sometimes they're duplicated, but I think that there are some really good things out there. To kind of address the comments that Commissioner Soltis just made, I think that I would like to see, and I think maybe I mentioned this last time, that there's a preamble in the ordinance to the effect that, and this can be wordsmithed, "While tourism is an important part of the Gig Harbor economy, it is the intent of the citizens to maintain Gig Harbor as a residential community and not a resort community." In addition to that, I would like to see limits on the total number of STRs in neighborhoods and in the city as a whole, as a percentage of the overall housing stock, so that we don't get into the situation where we become a resort community. I would also like to see STRs limited to owner-occupied units. That could be seasonal, so there was one comment in there about a fisherman who's gone for a few months out of the year and he rents his place out. I don't have any problem with that. I do have a problem with people who just buy a house with the intent of renting it out pretty much full-time. I would like to have a time shares. I would like to have a good neighbor policy. I think that was in the draft ordinance that one of the groups developed, and that STRs are not permitted in housing units with shared exterior walls such as duplexes, townhouses, and triplexes. And then lastly, simplify the application process to encourage compliance with the city ordinance. So, in addition to my summation of those other ordinances, that would be my interest in this.
All right, thanks. Carl, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to step back to Commissioner Soltis's thoughts briefly, if I could. You had brought up Commissioner some thoughts about code enforcement and the city's responses relative to code enforcement, and, you know, we are largely complaint-based as far as code enforcement goes. We haven't, while we have received some complaints over the years about short-term rentals, we haven't received any formal complaints that actually led to a code compliance case. So we don't have any, necessarily any record there. Right now, our code enforcement or code compliance arm is run by someone who has several jobs in the city, so he's basically a .25 in code enforcement, and then he does some other jobs. That's changing, it's in the process of changing, and they're working through some issues with the unions to get that sorted out, but we will be, and council has authorized a full-time code enforcement officer, so that will hopefully help, and that will make some changes in that regard. You had also mentioned some, something about parking and, you know, the nuisance property maintenance and things like that. Just for the commissioner's benefit, all of those ordinances are contained under Title VIII in our municipal code, as well as Title IX, and Title X includes traffic and parking and things like that. Let me just see if there was anything else here related to code enforcement. Oh, I'd also mentioned too that as far as police response to issues relative to short-term rentals, from what I understand, they do not discern really a difference between a short-term rental versus a rental unit versus even versus an owner-occupied, full-time owner-occupied. So, they're responding to calls. It doesn't necessarily end up in the call log or in their file that it was a short-term rental or something per se. So, again, I don't think we have any data relative there. And then I also, before I, it looks like Laura has something to say as well. I just wanted to speak to Commissioner Krosick's note that he had provided his thoughts in a written format, and a couple other commissioners have also done the same. And so if I could just address that really quickly, it is absolutely appropriate for commissioners to bring that to bear this evening, and we could even share those on screen and walk through commissioner's thoughts within those documents. But the reason that I did not share those out with the rest of the commission at the time that they were received by staff was that we didn't want to give any kind of appearance to the public, that we were holding a meeting prior to the meeting. So, the reason for the meeting tonight really was to go over the comments that we heard, that was Planning Commission's direction from the last meeting. That was the notice that went out to the public, and so that's sort of the public's expectation. And while, of course, I appreciate, and I know the public appreciates, all of the commissioners' work on synthesizing those comments and putting thoughts down on paper, it would be better to present those thoughts in a public forum. And then, if directed, staff can certainly share those documents with the rest of commissioners after tonight's meeting. We'll add them to the record, and they'd be available to everyone, and then we can, again, go over those at the next study session. So, if there are any questions about any of that, I'm happy to answer. I don't want to, I don't want to take us sideways too much on procedural stuff here, but just want to make sure that everyone understands that certainly what was provided was not ignored. It's just a matter of making sure that the process is transparent.
Okay. Thanks for that, Carl. I appreciate that, and just something I wanted to mention at the beginning of the meeting, but there wasn't anyone besides us in attendance, but now we have several people listening in, and I think that's great. Welcome to the public that is here at our meeting. As you know, you're always welcome to sit in on our meetings, listen to our deliberations, but this is not a public hearing. There won't be any public comment allowed. So I just ask that you not, you know, raise your hand because you won't be recognized, and please don't participate in in any of the chats that are available on Zoom calls, so. Thanks for that, and Laura, go ahead.
Thank you. I wanted to speak just to one of the comments on density and what is out there right now. If that's centralized in a neighborhood, what we've seen in two informal counts is a total of 44 on the first count and a total of 53 on the second, and that's including anything that is listed as a yacht overnight. And I do think it's interesting that that was a specific category that was carved out as well, whether or not moorage or marina stays are a little bit different. We're not, we do see a decent amount of downtown, but that's not exclusive to downtown at all. That is a count of the total number within city limits, and that's being very, very exact into, as to like who's on what side of Peacock Hill. So, we are not a super-dense STR community right now in the city limits, but we do keep an eye on it. Again, those are informal counts as things change every day, but I just wanted to bring those two numbers up and speak to that as well.
Laura, how did you glean that information? Because I went myself and I looked on VRBO, Airbnb, and FlipKey, and I did not find within the city limits anywhere near that number of STRs.
Sure, so I went on a total of four sites, so that's Vacasa, Airbnb, VRBO, Expedia, and I know two STRs that are privately managed. So, in those, in that, of those four platforms, and I know there's more, it was HomeAway, there's a few others. I took a years-long window and applied that from today's date through a year from now. So that's going to bring up everybody who may be booked over a specific weekend and fall off. Anyone who has an opening, for example, like that fisherman we mentioned who rents out his house for a certain number of months when he's gone. So that gives us the widest berth of availability of those STRs across some of the most-used platforms. So that's how I kind of calculated. I also use the fantastic city limits map that's interactive that our GAS coordinator, Mike Simmons, put together where you can cross-reference some of those geo-located rentals on a map and make sure that they're exactly within city limits. So, anything outside of that, absolutely not counted. I also left out the waterfront in, which is technically a different kind, it's technically a lodging level two that is sometimes listed, that was not included in this here at all.
And so that's whatever, you know, let's say 50, just for a nice round number. That's 50 unique properties, because again, as I looked at Airbnb and cross-referenced it to VRBO, there's probably 75% redundancy.
As I understand it, and this is just my count too, these are independent locations. I do not think for those specific dates you can list on multiple platforms. But again, I think there have been other counts, and any member of the public is welcome to do a count as well with those same parameters and show what they've found and cross-reference those numbers too. Consistently over the course of about, you know, I think our first count was in either 2020 or 2021. It remains around the same number. It's grown very, very minutely over the last year, but still we see some growth. So, we're seeing So we're seeing more outside of the city limits, which is interesting. But yeah.
Okay, great, thanks, well, I would I would also. Footnote my own comments that that I I put in a specific date, so if you have a year's worth of data, you're probably capturing, cuz I use next week.
And there's. You know, initially, that's what I'd done as well, and I thought, you know what, there there are definitely gonna be times when people don't offer their unit or their rental. So we tried to go as wide as possible on that, just to get an accurate count.
Okay. Yeah, well, that's good to know, so that that's a much larger number than than I thought we were going to hear this evening. But again. What what is the number of residences in Gig Harbor? I know our population is, you know, roughly ten or twelve thousand. Do we do we have, I know, I know we have the data, but. I see Carl smiling because I'm putting him on the spot. What roughly what is the number of individual residences that we have in Gig Harbor?
Chair, I don't have that number. Right off the top. And I I guess. Part of that is that, you know, the way we look at residential dwelling units, you know, we could, we could look at residential dwelling units just on the whole. Or break them down by, you know, single family apartments. And then, you know, and then there's those other uses such as. You know, assisted living, nursing homes and things like that, so. I don't have that number right off the top of my head, but I can certainly get that for you.
Okay. Well, maybe for our next meeting.
I will, I will get it.
That would be, that would be good to know because that that. Harkens back to one of the the comments, I I can't remember who made it about. Limiting the number potentially of of STRs. So. Well, great, you know, I I I, thanks for those overview comments, and I think that that's a good place to start. From my perspective, well, Carl, you had something to say, go ahead.
Yeah, just a quick follow up chair on as far as the the density and the and the counts go, I just wanted to also note that. You know, there and I'm sure the the commission is aware of this and the public is aware, but there are companies out there. That do that work, that that count the number of short term rentals that are within it, within the city limit. And. And then those companies also, of course, look to contract with those cities or jurisdictions to. To help them register or license those short term rentals in the in the long term. And of course, we haven't contracted with any of those companies to this point. But just wanted to make the commission aware that there that that technology does exist out there, we just don't have access to it at this point. And then secondarily, I I think the the issue of sort of. Flotels or short term flotels or what the shoreline master program refers to as live aboard. Now, those are not, it's it's not necessarily referring to short term rentals and the shore shoreline master program does not make a distinction. Between a long term or short term. Live aboard, but it does discuss live aboard and where they're allowed and. And the point I wanted to make is that live aboard are allowed only in permitted marinas, so essentially. A commercial, something that's been permitted commercially to. Act as a marina and there are a lot of regulations that come along with that. So I think that that is a really, it is a really interesting point, a really interesting distinction, something that. Likely enough, not a lot of cities out there that have tackled the short term rental issue. Deal with, but something certainly that I think as as the commission continues to deliberate on this. Something to keep in the back of our minds that we likely need to address as part of this. As part of these regulations, if that's the direction that we go.
Okay. All right, thanks. Well, my my overview takeaway is that that. You know, yes, there's a lot of passion on this subject and and that's okay and that's understandable. There's clear bias on both sides. And and I think we have to appreciate that that. Bias and passion. Are are just part of the human process, so. The. But the gestalt is that the overall feeling is that. With only, I think, one or two exceptions. Who said, you know, just absolutely not, don't want STRs in Gig Harbor, period. There was a feeling that. This is something we probably ought to do, but we absolutely want to regulate. And so I think our challenge really is is, you know, maybe just to start with a question. You know, does anyone support an outright ban? At this point.
Well, Greg, absolutely not, because I don't, first of all, it wouldn't work, people are gonna do it anyway. And I think that a reasonably regulated STR policy here in the city. Is probably a desirable thing to do, so.
I agree with that, banning is not reasonable. It is reasonable to regulate it, which we see that in all the comments. We've seen that in our own research of other communities. My sense would be fifty out of the housing units within the city limits is probably not an excessive number. The more important question could be, where are those units that are rented out located? Are they concentrated, for example, down near the waterfront? And that would require a little bit more research.
Okay, well, I don't think that we need to. Go around and get everybody's opinion, but but if you support an outright ban, you know, please speak up now. With, you know, with your opinion and and your logic, but otherwise. My I just wanna, I kinda, I wanna get that off the table. So so that we can just move on and say, okay, we're not gonna ban them, so how are we gonna regulate them?
If if I may.
Sure.
I think we ought to consider an outright ban on. Short term rental units that are not owner occupied. And. I put together sort of a straw man. Proposal for. Legislation on this subject, that was one piece of it. It's four pages, there's. References to newspaper articles and websites and others, it's not the kind of thing that. I think it's appropriate to go into point by point at a meeting like this. But I do wanna urge Carl to distribute it after this meeting. So you could have the benefit of my point of view on it and and the research that I did. But yes, Greg, I am in favor of considering a ban on non owner occupied. STRs.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, and 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 I believe from what I've read, Tom, is that 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 could be part of. You know, the ordinance, the regulation. That, you know, they're allowed in certain in certain circumstances, but not in others. So.
One thing other communities have adopted is a residency requirement and and it often goes like this. They want the owner to be resident in the unit for eight or nine months a year. The other four or five months or three or four months, whatever it is. They can rent out the entire place and they can take off to Tahiti if they want. While they're resident in the in the unit, they can rent. Up to one, two, three bedrooms, whatever, but we remain as residents, so. It's a little more complex than just. Eliminating or banning. STRs, I think there's there's a middle ground there that. Where we could craft something that would work well and be fair.
Okay. All right. A a couple of other things that that I think that we need to think about. Are what is the? What is the cost going to be to the city? Because if we create a set of regulations and there's no enforcement, then we've wasted our time as far as I'm concerned. And I think we're about to invest a whole lot of time on this. So I I believe that that a subtext to all of this has to be. How is the city going to staff this? In a new, presumably new permitting process. How is the city going to enforce it? With respect to a code enforcement officer? And so I would want to know, you know, what's the bottom line net cost or loss to the city going to be? Once the an ordinance like this goes into place and perhaps again, information from another jurisdiction could help us out there. As as understanding how many FTEs they needed, you know, once they adopted an ordinance that that they didn't have previously. There. I think that that the way that I approach this is is there actually was very. Little data, actually, there was no. Well, very little data, hard data about what's going on in Gig Harbor. I I certainly appreciate that that all of the small business owners in Gig Harbor. Depend on tourism and and STRs ostensibly bring additional tourists into Gig Harbor. You know. Primaphasie, I think that we would all agree with that. What is that impact? I don't know. So I decided to dig into that and it was interesting to find. That a study that was done found that that areas where they did not have STRs. The number of tourists actually did not go down, they just, the the folks that came into town just used. The hotels and motels and and beds bed of breakfast things. Now, I'm not using that as an argument not to do it. What what I was just trying to do is understand all of this from a database perspective because. There there are strong feelings on both sides of this, and so. I I don't want to make a decision based on feelings, I want to make. The best recommendation to city council based on as much factual data as. As I can muster and we can muster together as we push our recommendation forward. So I kinda looked at at what were the the major concerns of folks that were. Adamantly opposed to short term rentals and especially in the proverbial NIMBY, I don't want one next door to me. And and. The the reasons understandably and and they're no different in Gig Harbor than they are in in places all over the United States and that is, it's gonna degrade the neighborhood. Or it's gonna decrease, either decrease my property value or increase my property value or. It's gonna decrease my personal property value. The resident, the long term residents argued and the the young folks argued that it's pricing me out of the market. Because it's raising property values. And so. What I found by researching this is that there is, there was a study done in two thousand seven and then a study. Interestingly, just released on February ninth of this year, or excuse me, two thousand twenty one, sorry. That found that there is very, very little impact on. Rental rates. In markets. As a result of short term rentals. So for every one percent increase, I think it goes that that there was a. Well, let me put it in simpler terms, in in. A couple larger cities, they found that the upward pressure from STRs amounted to about thirteen dollars a month. Of of increased rental price. Other studies that I I tracked down and and I did, I'm happy to forward on this information, I put together an email that I'll send to. Carl indicates that. The 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 concern about. The party house is is one of the things that that people always worry about. And has Carl, as Carl has indicated, the city has gotten some complaints. Not really surprised to hear that it hasn't risen to the formal lever level, I don't suppose, because. We don't have a code enforcement policy that's very effective in the city of Gig Harbor. So. But regulations can be written such that if there are problems. They can be addressed. Those those regulations on a certain level already exist in in Gig Harbor, because if there's a noise problem with your neighbor. Whether they're a long term renter or a short term renter, there's a there's a. Way that you can deal with that, and it wouldn't necessarily be any different. And in the here and now with respect to a short term rental. But if short term rentals were permitted, then the. Sort of sledgehammer that could be delivered, that you can't necessarily deliver with your. Your permanent neighbor is that the permit could be pulled on a short term rental for violations of the city's, you know, ordinance. So anyway, the the I have lots more to contribute with respect to some data that I tried to dig up. I'm I'm ninety percent of the way through a an incredibly informative hundred and twenty three page document. That was done by a consulting firm back in two thousand seventeen. Which is they had updated one that they had done about six years before that as well, that goes through every possible perturbation. About short term rentals. Every possible consideration of ways to regulate it. And example after example after example of towns of various sizes across the United States that have approached this in in different sorts of ways. So. I'll stop there for a minute, Commissioner Krosick.
Yeah, Greg, first of all, could you maybe send out a reference to that particular document? I would be very interested in taking a look at it. Regarding funding of how we're going to enforce this, is there, this be a question. For the staff, is there any way that we could take some dollars from the hotel motel tax, which I assume would be. Imposed on the short term rentals and put that toward code enforcement on these units?
I can answer that. What we can spend those LTAC funds are are very, very, very specific. I do not believe we can allocate that to staff time on code enforcement. And that's just state auditor. Level law, there are four distinct categories that that we can use those funds for. And I don't think that that falls under any of them, unfortunately.
Okay, then I assume we would have some sort of annual or semi annual fee on this that could generate some revenue. And lastly, and this would be a question for the county assessor, does using your home as a short term rental. Result in a change of use that would increase the assessed value of the property?
I can answer that from the reading that that I have done and that is that. I don't know that it applies to Washington State, but it applied in a different state, I don't remember which one, but there is. Your tax base is different if you are considered a residential property versus a commercial property. And generally speaking, the commercial property tax base is higher. As far as your millage goes.
The point of clarity, in in my mind, when we talk about short term rentals, my mind focuses on. Those rental units that would be essentially run as a business. As opposed to people who might be renting out their house for a month or two while they're on vacation. Those business oriented. Operations are the ones that I personally. Want to look at much more closely than those that are just occasional rentals by owner occupied. want to look at much more closely than those that are just occasional rentals by owner occupied houses. What what is our general focus here, both? And how seriously do we want to regulate those that are owner occupied vice those that would be business oriented?
I I I could try, I could, I could hazard a hazard an answer there. Uh, Commissioner Bradbury, and I I think that the I think that the answers, that's one of the answers I think we're trying to get to. Uh, and I I think that we're probably looking at at both. Um, you know, it's an, it's an interesting question, you know, that's, that's the strange thing I think about short term rentals, right? Is that they don't necessarily give the outward appearance of any kind of a business. Uh, and 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 in as and as such, they're like a home occup- or a a home occupation, which our home occupation code, you know, we allow for somebody who wants to run a business out of their home um, to to have a home occupation there. Uh, but they have to abide by certain regulations and the may the main one that's typical across almost all jurisdictions is that it can't give any outward appearance that a business is actually there. So to get to uh, Cher's point about and and other points that have been made and and in a lot of the comments we heard about sort of uh, denuding the the fabric of the of the neighborhood. Um, and so, you know, I I think that I think it's a, it's a very good point that you're making and I think it's one that a that that everyone is kind of wrestling with and maybe some are wrestling with without really realizing that they're wrestling with it even when you read through those comments. Um, I and I, uh, I think Commissioner Brown has some thoughts on that uh, on this issue. And that's kind of the premise of of a a little bit with where um, where he is kind of leaning on these regulations, I think, you know, with the idea between owner occupied versus um, versus just a a straight up, I bought this property to turn it into a business. I bought this property because I'm going to turn it into a short term rental. I never planned to live there. It's just a, it is just a business. So, you know, there are, there definitely are different um, types of short term rentals. Uh, and I think, uh, and again, a- and as well as Liverpool, right, which is a totally different animal. Um, and I think uh, we need to try and wrap our arms around all of them and figure out how to uh, and and or should they be regulated? Laura, I don't know. Did you have some thoughts on that as well?
All detail from a a a topic that we we covered just a little bit ago and I'll throw it in there and then we can go back to this. Uh, but on the, on the topic of party houses and monitoring, um, I will say that that the owner occupied units could essentially uh, be present there and monitor sound. One of the excellent ideas and solutions that I've heard of from um, a a rental company is that they have decibel monitors within the unit. And if it reaches a certain level, then they send out somebody to to make sure that there isn't uh, an issue with neighbors. Um, so there there are options to ensure that we do not have party houses. Um, and there are other opportunities to make sure that we we have tools in place that that ensure that there is no disruption to the neighborhood. Uh, just things to consider as well. And I know that some of that technology is probably going to be leading that industry with um, those rental management companies. Um, so something to keep, keep in mind when we, when we look at a owner occupied only possibility. There there may be other other ways to go about that.
Okay, thanks, Commissioner Brown.
Yeah, I uh, feel very strongly that we ought to include in our recommendation to the council. Uh, a discussion of time shares and a discussion of the the new fractional ownership uh, vacation uh, houses. Yeah, you you really need to take a look at this new company uh, called Pacasa. It's P A C A S A. It's not Bacasa, it's Pacasa. And what they're doing, they they raised a bi- one billion dollars. It's a startup run by some guys uh, from the real estate industry. They're buying and building houses and they syndicate them to eight owners. So you've got a house that uh, if you're one of the owners, you can use for a couple, three weeks a year and then uh, that's it for you. Uh, the next guy moves in. Uh, they they're buying a lot of properties in uh, areas like Palm Beach, uh, Napa. Uh, there's no reason why they or a similar wannabe uh, Bu- Bacasa company uh, can't move into Gig Harbor and start buying houses. I mean, there's nothing that prevents them from buying the house next door to me or the house next door to that, et cetera. Um, I I think we need to address this. I I know it's new, it's different. It's not literally short term rentals, but it's a uh, an issue in the same category. So that's my two cents on that. I have some specific recommendations about that, but basically would the the only way to to deal with it is to to uh, prohibit that kind of ownership uh, in in the town, I think. I haven't seen anything else that seems like an effective way to uh, address it.
All right. Thanks, Tom. The um, um, and yes, it uh, not to nitpick, but it's P A C A S O. Um, Picasso and you can find it at Picasso dot com. Um, and I I agree uh, that that it's a bit of a concern and it's it's a, it's a different animal. And a couple of people have used the term social fabric uh, here this evening and and um, th- this was another um, a concept that I kind of grabbed on to and 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 dug down into and and found another article um, and and study that had been done. Um, and and it did find that um, towns where there was a proliferation of um of uh, short term rentals uh, over the course of time saw an increase in the rate of of uh, violent crime. Um, and it wasn't necessarily a direct result that it was the short term renters that were causing that. But what what they uh, surmised was that it was a gradual degradation of the social fabric. And I think we got us a couple of uh, inputs from the public, you know, addressing that issue, not using those words. But um, more talking about, you know, the, you know, where is Millville gone? Uh, where is Millville going? Um, wh- where are the people I used to know? Where is the feeling that I used to know? Um, and so I think that uh, that is something that we need to consider when we're, when we're looking at um, at these regulations. Um, different cities have done any number of things where they limit uh, either the absolute number of STRs in the city. They limit the relative density in a particular neighborhood. They have outright banned them in specific historic areas like Millville. Um, they have allowed only owner occupied uh, Airbnbs and forbidden um, non owner occupied Airbnb's. And so all of that has been done in various perturbations uh, in in places across the country. Um, and so I I I think kind of all of that is on the table and I would agree that that we should um, wrap our our arms around uh, all of it and um, and and make this a comprehensive uh, um, policy. Ordinance. Tom, did you have something else to add? You said your hand up.
No, I'm.
Okay.
Thank you.
Carl?
Uh, thank you, Cher. Uh, yeah, I thank you for uh, correcting the uh, Picasso. Um, that fractional ownership company that that is a a really interesting um, animal and I have done some reading on that as well. Um, and and I did want to note, uh, just so everyone knows and including the public, there is a company um, called Va Casa as well, um, that does own uh, properties they buy. I I believe that their business model is that they that they buy property. Uh, they don't. Okay, sorry, Laura is shaking her head. So they manage short term rentals, I think is what they do. Okay. Um, and we have on our list uh, that Michelle had called together of um, sort of short term rentals that we know about uh, as far as, you know, from a permitting standpoint within the city. Uh, but Casa does show up on that list. Um, out and they are out of Boise, Idaho. And the note that we have is that they manage, they're a management company uh, that manages multiple locations. And so, uh, and Laura, maybe you know more that are there is something akin to an Airbnb or a VRBO co- type company?
They are. So we also, uh, we have a a local representative that lives in Gig Harbor and manages the account um, for the, for this region. Um, he does sit on our LTAC board um, to provide a widely wide range of accommodation uh, representation within that. So of course, we have our collectors and receivers. Um, and we have a um, Va Casa representative in um, one of our uh, collector spots currently. So and I'm I'm sure he'd be happy to answer any questions.
I think in a nutshell, um, Carl, what Va Casa does is they, they try to pull you out of a group managed i- environment and and lower your overhead costs with a management company and try to try to upgrade. And um, I I know this because because I own a uh, a condo in Telluride, Colorado and um, it's managed by a a property managed company and I get Va Casa um, invitations all the time to switch over to Va Casa management. Um, but but we have prohibitions in in our ownership agreement that that doesn't allow that to happen. That's the simplified version of a Casa. But it's a good point that it's another place to look where these rental properties are happening. And and by the way, you may not have noticed it, but the gentleman that Laura, it may not be the same guy. But there was a representative from Picasso who provided some public input to us.
Was that James?
I I think so. That sounds familiar.
James Tera is our Picasso representative on LTAC.
Yeah. Go ahead, Commissioner Saltus.
Uh, if I could shift to another topic, Greg, for just a second, um, since I kind of went went pretty broad in my first one, I want to go specific now. That's okay, because the Gig Harbor Alliance had that section there about conditional versus versus permitted uses and they talked about seven different zones where it's one way and a few zones it's different. And I was going to ask Carl to explain how that kind of thing evolved into different conditions or permits for different zones and and talk a little about the the hex, now what role that person plays in the world today and what he might play if it was fully permitted.
So the, so what was, so the, uh, sorry, Commissioner. So the first question then is
There's several different districts in the city that talked about where the STRs are um occurring and some of those are conditional and some of them are per- permitted. It varies by zone. I wondered what was that, how that evolved to be different by zone for STRs?
Well, so the 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 STRs are captured under the lodging um, level one use. And so we have a, we have a land use table uh, within our code that goes through all of our listed uses uh, by zone and either list them as a conditional use within that zone or a permitted use. If it's a, if it's a permitted use, then it's something that's allowed outright. There might still be some permitting that that would be required. For instance, maybe it needs a you know, if it's a commercial development within a certain zone, maybe it needs a uh, site plan review. Or if it's within the waterfront commercial, then potentially they need, they also might need a shoreline substantial development permit. But in other zones, uh, some of these uses are listed as conditional uses. Um, and that might be because of the type of use uh, and other uses that are allowed or permitted um, within that zone and how they intermix. Um, and I'll just read to you the intent of our um, conditional use permit uh, in seventeen sixty four. It says that certain uses, because of their unusual size, infrequent occurrence, special requirements, possible safety hazards or detrimental effect on surrounding properties are classified as conditional uses. These uses may be allowed in certain use districts by a conditional use permitted or permit granted by the hearing examiner, subject to the procedures established uh, in in chapter two twenty five, which is the chapter that that um, authorizes the city's hearing examiner. And did that, does that answer the 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 question or does that get to the heart of of your question?
Well, I'm just trying to find simplicity here, make more sense, because if they're all single family residents and the people are requesting that they want to turn it, they're uh, turning into a short term rental.
Uh huh.
I'm not sure why it would matter particularly where they're at uh, in terms of permitted versus conditional. Um, and maybe it was evolving for a pretty good reason, but it just didn't jump out at me. Because I kind of think about ways to streamline the process and uh, I know we're going to get there probably later in the conversation, but that's something that directly came out of one of their uh, their inputs and I wanted to pursue it a little bit more. Thank you, Carl.
Well, and I see your point there too, Commissioner Saltus and um, you know, that I guess that that gets to the the heart of the matter here a little bit too, in that, you know, we have we have put short term rentals under that lodging level one use. Uh, but they're not really a lodging level one use per se. You know, lodging level one, at one point, the city had definitions for bed and breakfast, hotel, motel. Uh, I think those are just three. And then at some point, we made a change and we and we lumped them into lodging level one, level two and level three. Well, at that time, of course, short term rentals weren't contemplated. Um, and so when we made that change uh, and put these together under lodging level one, two and three. Um, the fast forward to the point now where we have these other types of lodging uses out there and we've just tried to put them in where we can. Uh, and uh, short short term rental is, you know, relatively close to being akin to like a bed and breakfast. And so that's where we put it. And so some zones require, some zones permit those lodging level one uses outright and some zones require the conditional use permit, which then requires, of course, um, a hearing with our, with the city's hearing examiner to get to get that approval.
Okay, I found this on the web for a gift.
So if we basically added a new category for short term rentals, then that might uh, eliminate this particular mixture of seven this and six of that. It might just be across the board permitted if we decided that was the best thing to do.
It could certainly be, that could certainly be the recommendation. Um, could certainly recommend that they're permitted, you know, across the board in zones where it makes sense to allow that use. I, we would have to, I, uh, that the the commission could certainly make that recommendation, but I think that is, yeah, I think that is the the point is that because short term rentals are kind of different. Um, you know, what zone should they be allowed in? And what zone should they not be allowed in? And I think we heard from the public, uh, a lot of opinions on that. There were, there were a lot of comments in there that talked about not allowing them, for instance, in the downtown business district. Uh, or, you know, I think there was a couple of comments talking about not allowing them where uh, in in R one, where we have other single family residential, you know, the single family residential zones and trying to keep them in in commercial zones. Um, so, yeah, I think this, I think it's a a very good point, Commissioner Saltus. It's something that we definitely have to tackle, I think, as part of this uh, part of these regulations.
Yeah, and I I I would add that as we work through that, that's one of the, I I don't know if it should be at the top or at the end after we've got gone through everything, but 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 maybe at the top and that is, is are we going to look at this as a, as a conditional use issue? Or and then work, work all of our recommendations down from there? Or are we going to say it's it's permitted everywhere? Um, and then work our recommenda- and then add the the, you know, the other parts of the ordinance with, for lack of a better term, restrictions. Um, uh, about where and density and, you know, quiet hours and all that kind of stuff. Um, I might posit that that we start with the decision uh, and I don't mean this, so they write this moment, um, but uh, of conditional use or outright permitted.
And 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 again, and I I'd like to just throw in there too, as far as a conditional use permit goes, you know, one of the considerations for that versus a versus a permitted use is that a conditional use permit, you know, au- automatically uh, opens up a public process. So there So there's automatically noticing that's going to go out. There's automatically going to be some opportunity for public input. And there's going to be a public hearing associated with that. So it gets, it, it gives the, the neighbors or those interested in whatever that use might be, an opportunity to be heard. And the hearing examiner, which is, you know, they're, it's quasi judicial. Will take all of that comment under consideration. And those folks would actually have an opportunity then to come to the hearing and make their voices heard as well. So it, you know, it, it opens up a more public process than something that might just be permitted outright.
And, and the other thing that it does though, on the, on the negative side for someone interested in doing this is it adds a significant, significant time delay. It adds expense and it acts complexity. And I think that all, all three of those things I'm not in favor of. And, and certainly we've heard loud and clear from, from folks that have done this. And, and the one individual who's in the, in the middle of this process right now, how frustrating that has been.
Yeah, and that, I think that's a, that's a really good point, Chair, and I would just follow up on that. That this was a question I think that might have been asked when we met, when last we met and discussed this, the subject. But, you know, currently a conditional use permit, the application fee is one thousand eighty-two dollars. And then there's some publishing fees for both the notice of application and for notice of public hearing that ranged between a hundred and fifteen to a hundred and thirty dollars each time. And then because it's a conditional use permit that's going to the hearing examiner, we also require a deposit of a thousand dollars. For the hearing examiner's time. So the city recouped some of that cost. And then of course there's business licensing associated, city, city business licenses, forty dollars. And then Washington state requires, I can't remember what it's, it's twenty-four dollars total, but that's broken down into two parts. And I can't remember what the two parts are off the top of my head, but nominal fees. But there's, yeah, it's, it's a good point that you bring up, Chair, that with the CUP, there is definitely, there's definitely cost and time associated for the, for the applicant.
Okay, Bob, are you done?
Yeah, just looking for an early win. Thank you.
I'm just, I know you all said you had some notes, so you may as well, I can, I'm scrolling through my, my bullet points here. I think another thing that, that, that came up is the effect of short term rentals on the availability of long term rentals. And speaking of long term rentals, I would just, I'd just like to make a comment. I know we got one, one comment from an end of the, the fisherman, Mr. Hoppin, who, who, there's a couple of things that I'm unclear about. But based on his address, I think he lives outside the city limits. And, and so the home that he rents, I don't believe would be affected by this. But it, that's really, you know, neither here nor there. But, but more importantly, it, his, his particular instance is not a short term rental. He talked about renting his home for three months at a time. And that doesn't fall under a, a short term rental, that's a long term rental. And so any of this regulation would not, would not apply in that case unless I just don't understand. And, and there was more detail in there that, that, that wasn't clear to me that, that over the course of the three months. I, his letter gave me the impression it would be the same person as opposed to, you know, twelve different people one week at a time.
I think the latter is more likely.
Yeah, I don't know. And, and I don't think we should make assumptions, but because it, it doesn't really matter. But it, it just to, just that my point is to, to keep clear the definition of short term rentals. It's less than thirty days. Let's see.
Chair, I have a couple of questions or suggestions, if I may.
Sure.
There's several significant points in the, um, the Gig Harbor Alliance paper that it would probably be worth taking down quickly to see what they said. And I mean, not just, not delve too deeply, but they have sections on parking, on traffic and things like that. And they have a really interesting set of performance questions and standards that would go into any kind of formal applications. And if this is a time for doing that, it might be worth our little brief walk through of those to see what the group thinks.
Sure.
I was looking at number four on their submission conditions, performance standards. There is a talk about a maximum of two guests per bedroom plus children limit down there. Two nights, no fewer than two or nights rented. Quiet hours notification, some, I think, some solid comments that would, I don't know if we're going to be delving deeply into this in terms of the specifics. But I think they made a pretty good first cut at this whole thing of laying out the things that any STR needs to adhere to. I was wondering what the rest of the group thought about those and I'll, I'll shut up for a minute.
Thoughts?
I, I agree with that. I, I don't agree with everything that they proposed. For example, I don't see any point in a two, a two night minimum. But, you know, that's subject to discussion and I think that would be a good thing for us to discuss at some point. But in, in the straw man that I put together, I've incorporated quite a few things that came from the short term rental allowance and I, alliance. And I, I agree that it's certainly, all of their input is worth considering.
Carl, I have a question about, about inspections and code enforcement. And what liability does the city assume by making an inspection on a short term rental? To assess whether or not they've met all of the, the safety codes and so on?
That's a good question, Chair. I, I don't think that there's necessarily any liability there. If there are requirements for them to be meeting as far as, you know, if we're talking about you know, international fire code or, you know, the international residential codes or anything like that. I mean, we, the, the city does those inspections already, you know, for say, a tenant improvement. Where, you know, a new business is moving into a, to a, a space that was previously something else. Or maybe it's just a newly established business. But, you know, we're already doing, conducting inspections like that, so.
Okay, I, I guess I, the, the thing that sticks out to me, for example, is a carbon monoxide detector. And, you know, we come in and say that you're come, you know, that he's got one there and it works. And eighteen months later, someone dies of carbon monoxide exposure inside a short term rental. Then, then we are, we're good to go. Same with a fire extinguisher that malfunctioned, that kind of thing.
Yeah, I mean, of course, the, you know, the, the city is always can always be the target of a lawsuit for, for various reasons. And, you know, I, you could, you could liken it to, I suppose you could liken it to a large development where we've allowed trees to be cleared. And, you know, certain trees had to be retained per code. You, you know where I'm going with that. So it's, it's kind of a similar, I, I think it's, I think it's kind of a similar discussion. So, no, I, I don't think that there's any direct liability or exposure. I think that that's what the city is required to do.
But Carl, this is basically, it was a residence and it's being turned into a, a short term residence. Why would there be any additional inspections that would be needed? Is it, it's still a rent, it's a, it could have been a regular single family house and it could have been a long term rental. And now it's a short term rental. Do you always have to do an inspection between any kind of change like that? Or it's still in the general category of residence?
No, I don't think that we have to do any kind of inspection. And, you know, it's a, this is a, probably a question for the building official to weigh in on. And something I'll make a note of and find out from him. But, you know, to your question, it's a, you're, it's a very good point that we're talking about a, we have a single, so let's just say we have a single family residence. And somebody could rent that out to someone, you know, and not necessarily have any kind of inspection requirements or additional regulations imposed on them as a result of that. But if it's a short term rental, then we're saying no, if it's a short term rental, then you have to do XYZ. The difference, I guess, is that we're maybe recognizing short term rental as a different use category. And we're not recognizing long term rental necessarily as a different use category. Now, some cities have gone to, you know, take Seattle, for instance, where they actually do have a registration process for single family homes that, that people rent out as a, you know, as a business. And so you're supposed to register with the city. And I, there are certain requirements, I think, to come along with that. And there's fees that are paid. And so, you know, I suppose that's another thing that a jurisdiction could do. That's obviously not what we're talking about here tonight. But I, I think, you know, your point is very well taken.
Yeah, where I was going with that is, you know, is there a compelling reason for the city to, to get involved with that? And, and I guess at this point I'd need to be convinced of that. I, I, I get it from a, from a public safety perspective. But, you know, again, that, that is a significant workload. If, if it's fifty-four this year. And, and I think it's safe to presume that as the city grows, the number of SDRs are going to grow. That is always the case, based on the research that I've done. So, so and it gets back to my, my question earlier is what, what additional cost is this going to bear on the city?
And I, I think part of it comes down to how, how it ends up being permitted to. You know, we, we perform a lot of inspections on projects that are permitted, you know, throughout the, throughout the city. Any kind of commercial, residential, you know, and there's, and there's, and there's different inspections that have to happen over the course of a development. You know, there's a, you know, there's early inspections where we're looking at tree protection fencing, for instance. But, you know, the, the building department, they've, they've got multiple, multiple, multiple inspections that they're performing on, on projects, you know, throughout the year. And there's multiple permits that go into those projects as well. So, you know, I, I don't know that this would be any different than, than that.
Okay.
Do you need to do an inspection when you go from, at a home occupation to a single family house?
We don't currently do, we don't currently do home occupation inspections.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
So a, a, another comment I would have is that as far as the quiet hour go, quiet hours go. I think seven o'clock is too early and it should be either eight o'clock or nine o'clock. Especially since we're talking about, you know, being right in the middle of residential neighborhoods. Certainly eight, I think that eight o'clock is maybe the, the city's current time, I think, you know, for construction to start and jackhammers and that's the thing I believe is eight o'clock. So, I can see it would be eight, but I don't understand seven o'clock at all.
Chair, there's a couple of commissioners with their hands raised too, just so you
Yeah, I can't see because, because of the screen sharing.
Should I turn that off? Would that be easier? Okay. Thanks, Michelle.
Commissioner Griner.
So I, I like this document is kind of like a first stab starting place. I mean, there were things that I liked about it. There are things that I thought needed to be changed. But I, I like it as kind of a, as we put together ideas that kind of put some organization to all these different pieces. And I thought that was important. Just a couple, and again, you know, I have like six pages spread out on my desk with circles and stars and everything else written all over it. But I thought the document by, and I'm probably mispronouncing Thomas Benvu, we, Benvu his comments. There were a lot of things in that that I thought were really relevant and that kind of just took what's in this to a different level. And one of them that I circled when you were talking about the, you know, the fire extinguishers and all that is his comment said, the dwelling must meet and be maintained to our current local building and safety codes. Clearly stated information should be posted. I mean, it was a good way to include that, but not make the city be the, the ruling arm on that. So I just thought that was an interesting approach to that. Sorry, now I have all my pages, they're all getting confused here. There were a couple of things that I just want to make sure that, that we consider that I thought were important. The, and I'm not, I don't have opinions one way or another, but I think we should make sure we include this in our conversation is, you know, limiting the number of short term rentals perhaps per neighborhood. Or that there's a distance between those. I thought that those were important points that were brought up a number of times in these different things. And, you know, I, I think unlike Tom, that the minimum stay of fewer than two consecutive nights, I think that's an important thing. And I think, you know, there were quite a few comments that it should be a minimum of one week. So, anyway, those are my little pieces to add to our conversation right now.
Go ahead, Commissioner Krosick.
Okay, we've got a lot of ideas floating around here, a lot of really good ideas. And I'm wondering if maybe from a process standpoint, perhaps the best way to get something, start getting something down on paper would be if we could all submit our ideas or concepts or pieces of different ordinances that we like and have staff kind of group those together. So that we've got something that we can all focus on and say, you know, I like this. I think it should be three days instead of two days or five days or whatever it is. But from, from my thinking process, I work best when I see things on paper and can say, yeah, I like that, I like that with this modification or I don't like that. So I'm wondering if that might be a way to proceed to actually start developing a framework for an ordinance.
Okay. Yeah, I, I like that suggestion. I, I think the discussion I I think the discussion so far has been useful, um but I think In in addition to your point, John, a a a number of us Um I have a a number of documents That that I think would be real helpful for the other commissioners to read that that um I'm prepared to send and and be, you know, passed on to y'all. Um one of them is a is a, you know, the daunting hundred and twenty-three page document, but I have to tell you Um of everything that I read and it, you know, it it is It's it is a consultancy report and so the i- it's, you've got bulletized formatting. Um so you can, you can cruise through all the bold type and choose or not to read The two or three paragraphs underneath it. So so it it doesn't take quite as long to get through as it would seem, but There's a tremendous amount of information, data based stuff in there and examples from around the country Um that that I think can help us make the best decision because it it basically addresses every, like I mentioned earlier, every possible Um this city has done this. They've said you can have one, but you gotta live there. They've said you can have one where you gotta live and only one other. They've, you know, and and right down the line it goes. It's, you know, it said it can be in in not in residential, but in commercial and and so Um it's it's, I just found it incredibly useful as I as I plowed through that over the past couple of days. Commissioner Bennett.
Yeah, I think um in the same light of uh What we've been talking about in terms of trying to compile and and develop a process for coming up with this. I would also really like to see some, and I've done my own research and it sounds like everyone else has kind of done their own research in in various capacities. Examples of legislation that have been passed and kind of the language that they're using. How they're dividing up the various topics related to it in terms of safety or time or code requirements or what have you. I feel like seeing some actual uh Regulations that have been passed could be helpful in terms of helping us Identify the parts that we need to be discussing and then kind of landing on how what we feel in terms of making our recommendations also. Um I don't know if this is something that we could all submit our our examples and then Posts them somewhere to review in some fashion or how we can do something like that to share this information we've all been gathering.
Yeah, I I think that the process is to, uh and thanks, thanks for that suggestion. Because it's always nice to see, you know, what other cities have done Um already and and uh they don't necessarily have to look exactly like Gig Harbor. Um but but it was interesting to, you know, Google, you know, Port Angeles STR regulations, Port Townsend STR regulations, Squim STR regulations. Um and then some bigger cities as well. Um so yeah, that's a, that's a good suggestion. So but uh but anyway, that the, as you do that, again, that stuff can be submitted. I like the idea of Carl and his staff pulling that together, just like they did with all of the public comments. Um and and maybe giving us a starting point, uh because uh like Commissioner Krasik Um to have something tangible after some useful discussion on this Um to start red inking it, uh I think is the next reasonable step.
Greg, a suggestion, um just me, but you know, I think I've Plowed through that similar document. Um maybe if we set some Uh I don't know, potential titles for clauses that we would be thinking about. I'm thinking about like Uh say, for example, enforcement. I mean, we've, maybe we should all try to find the best one and write it up, an enforcement Uh clause or a licensing registration requirements clause. Take what we've seen before and other ideas and Draft up one of those. So I mean, we could all go off in like a hundred different directions here because there's that much to to look at. But maybe there's a subset of standard things you'd want to see us come back with something. For example, like quantitative requirements, you know, do we set a cap? Do we set a ratio? Do we set whatever? Do we just let it be what it is? Because there's lots out there and we can uh probably find the best examples and tailor it to Gig Harbor and then um send it in.
Yeah.
I don't. Just thought.
Along along those lines, perhaps it would be efficient to Assign or volunteer for certain segments so we don't all turn in Uh multiple copies of things.
Well, I know, um Tom, you mentioned that you had, you had a straw man proposed. And it sounds like, John, you had at least Comments. I don't know if you had actually put together suggestions of of thing, but maybe I- instead of just dumping, you know, large tranches of information Um that that Your email to Carl to distribute should include some ideas. Um because I think All of us probably have, you know, this is what we feel is the most important thing that needs to be in there. We don't have to get into nitty gritty, but Maybe bulletize, you know, the the suggestive of having some main categories and then saying, okay, I want to see regulations on You know, density. I want to see regulations on, you know, whatever. Um and and perhaps um You know, what your personal bias or per- personal opinion may be uh uh in that regard.
I I think I think this is a really good idea. This is a kind of where I was going to end the the meeting Uh with sort of a similar suggestion uh that I I like the idea of the getting into the specifics. Um or sort of parsing, parsing it out by category. I think the only issue there might be that I I don't know if there's any agreement yet Um amongst the commissioners on what those Categories are, and I think maybe that is Something that we could determine. Uh you know, that could be something that comes out of the next meeting. After everybody's kind of provided their thoughts. Um staff can syn- synthesize, synthesize those thoughts Uh into uh some sort of a table, something akin to what we did with the public comments, but maybe Pulling out, um if the planning commission is interested in going that direction, pulling out um The categories that uh that are brought up uh and the regulations beneath them. Uh and then the planning commission could have a discussion around that table to determine What everybody agrees is is important and should be, should definitely be in A set of regulations and or those things that, you know, may maybe could be or on the cusp and then those that are definitely Now we really, actually, none of us really like that. Um I think that, I think that would be sort of a a useful exercise and it might, doesn't have to be a one time exercise, you know, we could We can, we can work through that. Something like that, you know, At a couple of meetings, if it if it takes it. So but I think that's a, I think that is a logical next step and you know, there's already been some commissioners who have done some of that Work to get their, get their thoughts out on paper. Um and those could be refined. Uh and you know, if if the commission wants to set some sort of Deadline for those to come in, that would probably be a good idea. Uh and then uh they could come in to me, I could, we could put, Michelle and I could put them into uh A a folder with a link and then we'll share that link out. Uh and then, of course, that would all be public. Um that we would include as part of the the packet for for the next meeting. So so the public would have an opportunity to see What everyone's thinking as well and what you're gonna talk about at the next meeting.
Okay, so what's a reasonable deadline for y'all to get get the information? Our next meeting is in two weeks, I think.
Yeah, it would be March seventeenth would be the next meeting. Um if we feel like there's time To get there, I mean, we could, we could move. Uh you know, we could say that it would be the next meeting that we would actually discuss this again. That's that's up to up to up to you, Commissioner.
About my March sixteen?
Just kidding, Carl.
Speechless.
Yeah, that's not, that's not good for Carl. He's gonna be up at uh Donegan's. On the seventeen. Well, um I mean, is is a week from now uh too soon?
Greg, I like a week. I think that would be just fine.
Okay.
But the only, the only issue there uh is that Technically, our, you know, our report Um and the agenda is supposed to be published that day. So we wouldn't really have time to pull all, pull everything together and have it ready for For public consumption um before the meeting on the seventeenth, so.
Okay.
We have an extra Thursday in this month as well. Or we could pick, you know, that we could hold a a special meeting on the twenty-fourth too, if the planning commission would like to do something like that.
I'd like to go with that extra Thursday.
So that the the implication there being that We would not meet on the seventeenth and meet instead on the thirty-first?
Potentially, although Uh there's It's it's likely that we may want to bring the um Actually, it's not likely. I would say it's a a definite that we would want to bring the transitional housing And permanent supportive housing, emergency shelter Um ordinance back to you likely on the seventeenth and discuss Uh what we've heard from the Department of Commerce. To keep that process moving forward.
Okay. Well, I don't think that would be a long meeting. So maybe we could stick with um The seventeenth for that meeting so we can keep, keep that moving along to use your words. And then whether we met um on the twenty-fourth or the thirty-first Uh is indifferent to me.
Likewise.
I concur.
So it looks like everybody couldn't make either one of those days, although there's a question mark on Amanda's face.
I was gonna say, I prefer the thirty-first. The twenty-fourth is a design review board meeting night and we haven't determined if there's gonna be a project being heard that night yet.
Okay, good point, good point, Michelle.
Some, and let's say the thirty-first.
Then inputs to Carl. Uh what day for this particular effort?
Your call, Carl.
Oh, okay, uh for me Uh I think if we could get everything By, if we had, if we had a week. So by the seventeenth would be great.
Okay.
Hey Greg, if we can find some particularly fine language that works perfectly, um We wouldn't necessarily have to bulletize, we could just bring the actual clause as we would propose writing it to the You could send it to Carl as a starting point, couldn't you?
Oh, sure. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Commissioner Griner.
So I I just wanted to clarify before, before we come up with our own versions of all this. Um are we saying that what you guys have already sent in To Carl would, we will get before that? I mean, I guess I would think that if some of you have already prepared documents that aren't already shared. We see those after this meeting, so we're not all duplicating efforts, I guess, is my question.
Oh, that's a great question, Commissioner Griner. So I think um I think what we could do is that we could set up a folder. Um now it would sort of be a repository Of all of this information where um where we would, we would place it. We can send links out to every everyone. Um and we'll put uh all of that information That we already have received within that folder, uh since we've discussed it this evening, uh the public is aware Uh that some of that information has already been drafted, uh and we will um All of that information will be made public uh at the time that we we publish the agenda for that March thirty-first meeting. Does that make sense, Commissioner Grant? No, sorry. Let me, let me, let me rephrase. So I'll, I'll take Uh what we've already received from commissioners uh and put it into a folder. And we'll share that link to that folder uh with with the rest of the planning commission tomorrow.
Okay, that's better. I I didn't understand why we'd have to wait for the agenda. Okay.
No, you wouldn't have to wait. I'm just, uh I'm saying that for the public's sake to let them know that all of that information will be made public, but it will be As we normally do prior to a meeting, make the the information of the Planning agenda, planning commission's agenda packet public one week prior to the week, so.
But we could see it before that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Commissioner Brown?
I'd also suggest that we put the alliances, uh straw man in that folder so that We can all uh find it easily and so members of the public can find it easily.
I think you can, you can probably do that. Can't change, Michelle? Just extract it from uh the information and I I appreciate Tom's point that Instead of having open different emails and then going to the link and then pulling it out and You know, to be able to have it all, you know, lined up next to each other, I I think is is kind of what he's driving at and I can, I can Hypnotize with that.
I'm creating the folder right now.
Great. All right. So that takes us to our last agenda item and that is other business, future business, which I think we've pretty much just covered.
Yes. Oh, and I, and I will say, uh would the commission uh be interested In a presentation from the Department of Commerce relative to transitional housing and permanent supportive housing Uh and emergency shelters at that meeting uh on the seventeenth?
Carl, would that be something you could just summarize for us? Or is that uh, there's a lot of technicalities in there?
Basically, they are the subject matter experts on um on housing in general. Uh but certainly, if it's, if it's not of interest to the planning commission, uh I can certainly get um I can certainly see what I can do about uh getting a, getting a summary. I mean, I will have their We will have their letter that they provided us and we'll, we'll certainly share that uh and we can discuss the merits of that letter. Um and maybe uh maybe there's something else I can get from the Department of Commerce that would Help um Support their uh premises within that letter.
Can you give us a sneak peek? Carl, you're being kind of mysterious. Is that inappropriate for this meeting?
I know, I I don't think it is. Uh it's certainly not inappropriate. The, we we we, you know, we received this letter. I've just got a draft version of it at the moment. But Essentially, I think at the, at the, at the end of the day, the easiest way to describe what they're asking for is that They're feeling like the permanent supportive housing and transitional housing should not necessarily Uh be treated in a s- exactly same manner as the emergency shelter. Uh type use. And so we've, you know, the way it's been, the way it's been proposed right now. We've said that they will all be conditional uses across the board. Um and the Department of Commerce does not necessarily Agree with us on that point. And then there are some, there's some reasoning that they've provided behind that.
Okay, Commissioner Brown, did you have a thought?
I have a question on a uh older topic. Uh I'd like to know whatever happened with the UGA study and what's next in terms
And what's next in terms of the U G A?
Thanks for the question, Commissioner Brown. So we did, we just received recently the final report. From the consultant. Which then means that I need to draft. Planning Commission's recommendation, but I didn't want to do that until we got the report back and made sure that. The changes have been incorporated. Per planning commission's direction. So that needs to be, I need to review it, write up that. The recommendation. And then the next steps for that. For the U G A analysis is that it will be going to the the. City Council for a study session. On, I believe on March tenth, if I'm not mistaken, so right around the corner here. And that will be the first study session and I believe it is slated for another study session. Potentially on the twenty-fourth, but I have to check my calendar to make sure I'm right on that.
Well, when will the recommendation? When will we get to take a look at the recommendation, Carl?
Your your recommendation?
Yes.
So it'll be, it'll be drafted and provided to the chair for chair signature and then provided to the. The council. As part of their packet for that that meeting on the tenth.
All right.
Okay.
And I, maybe I, maybe I could bring up something else here that's a little off topic, but sort of in line with what Commissioner Brown. Or Commissioner Brown was thinking or what what his thoughts were there, I think. And that is how we how we currently do planning commission recommendations. We've kind of done it the same way for a really long time at the city and I know that other jurisdictions do it a little. Do it differently and and maybe this is just food for thought that I'm just going to throw out there and then maybe we can discuss it another time, but. Some jurisdictions will utilize sort of a formal document that. Actually incorporate some attestations in it, so the whereas. Statements and clauses, so it looks a little bit more like a council resolution in some ways. And that is then brought forward to the to the planning commission body. At a meeting where we are looking to get that recommendation done. And then the planning commission makes a decision on that recommendation specifically and votes to. Votes to have the chair sign that recommendation. That might be something, you know, we want to talk about maybe incorporating. I don't, I don't know what the planning commissioners feel. Planning commissioners might feel about that, but I'm just throwing it out there, maybe food for thought, maybe some more discussion about that at a later later time.
Okay. Well, thanks for all that. Thanks, Tom, for that follow up question too. And and I know the. This is, this is a big deal. There's been a lot of discussion. It it may not feel like we got anywhere tonight, but I think. I think obviously people have done a lot of research, a lot of thought and and have prepared some things that we can share with one another. And and it has been very useful for me to hear, you know, where you all are coming from, what your thoughts are based on on the research. And I'm excited to to see some of the stuff that you've already, you know, put pen to paper. And I think that this is going to be time well invested as we move forward to the next step and and. Getting something down on paper. So. With that, I would say if there's no other discussion, I am willing to entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I move.
Second it.
Okay, all those in favor of adjourning the meeting, say aye. Surprisingly, the motion passes unanimously. It is six fifty-five P M. And this meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Right, everybody.